Welcome, everybody. And my name is Elan and I am Paul's, Paul Manley's Chief of Staff. And I'm happy to welcome you all to this online town hall meeting with Paul. I would like, before we start to acknowledge that we are on the traditional unceded territory of the Tsunamal First Nations and that the writing of Nanaimo Lady Smith also includes traditional and unceded territories of the Tsunamal First Nation, the Laxin First Nation, and the Staminus First Nation. And before I pass it over to Paul, I would like to let people know that there, that you're welcome to make comments in the, in the chat room on YouTube and ask questions there. Please remain respectful and friendly. We do have moderators who are going to be moderating the chat there. So please make sure to always remain friendly. And I'm going to pass it over to Paul now, who will first give an update on his work in the last few months, and then we'll pass to questions. We have had some questions that have been emailed to us in advance, and we will also take questions from the YouTube chat. So over to you, Paul.
Well, good evening and welcome. We are on the traditional territory of the Tsunamal First Nation, unceded territory. And the writing of Nanaimo Lady Smith is in the territories of Laxin, Staminus, Tsunamal, and Tsunamal. And it's a pleasure to be here to serve this community and the people of this community in Ottawa as your representative. It's been a really busy time with COVID-19. I feel like the lockdown has been right here in front of my computer and in my chair. And a lot of this was at home at first. We've been working as a hybrid parliament, so it took, took a little bit of time, but we got ourselves up and running to be, be able to work in Zoom in parliament. We had a number of committees running, not all of the 27 standing committees were up and running. We had, I think, nine committees going. So there were days when I would be in hybrid parliament on Zoom and then committee meetings on Zoom, and some days I would spend six to eight hours on Zoom. We had technical briefings during the initial months of COVID, I think up until pretty much June. Technical briefings every day, so over 100 technical briefings that I called into. And that was an opportunity for me to advocate for constituents, for businesses, for different organizations in the constituency, to be able to ask questions and to get clarification. And that was, those, those were with, you know, bureaucrats and the department heads of different departments that were dealing with the COVID-19 crisis. The summer recess, normally the House of Commons goes into recess the third week of June. So usually around June 20th, June 21st, the House recesses and then the work is all in the constituency office. So I'm here in the office with my staff, working on issues with the constituents. And out in the community, normally I would be out at all the different summertime events, but they weren't happening this year. And then the House reconvenes typically the third week of September. We had a series of emergency meetings related to COVID over the summertime. So the House was set to meet four times over the summer. And we met a number of times during the pandemic lockdown as well. So I went to Ottawa in mid-April and then I went in, in May for a few weeks, taking turns between Elizabeth May and Jenica Atwin and myself. There was a limit to the number of people you could have in the House of Commons. They limited just around 58 MPs and it was representational of the number of, like proportional to the number of MPs for each party. So there was allowed to have one Green Party member in the House as part of that. And as part of that, I was able to make speeches and ask questions to ministers. And so with the, with, during COVID, we actually, during normal question period, you get a 35 second question and get a 35 second answer. During COVID, they extended that. So I would get five minutes of questions and answers with the government. And we would take turns doing that. In the summertime, we took turns on, on the hybrid parliament and going to Ottawa. So there were times during the summer session where I was active from home and I was supposed to go to Ottawa for August 24th, but the House was adjourned and pro-rode and we're not going back until September 23rd, when there will be a speech from the throne as part of a reset for the government. Now, the government was in the middle of a scandal, the We Charity scandal at the time. So that shut down all of the committees that were dealing with that scandal. It also shut down other committees that were dealing with the, the emergencies with, with fisheries, for example, the salmon fishery. We had a collapse in salmon fishery this year and the, that committee was doing really important work around that. I'm on the Human Resources Committee, so I'm dealing with housing, seniors, people with disabilities. I'm on the Agriculture Committee, which was also active. And I'm on the China-Canada Committee as well. So those were some of the committees that I was sitting on during, during the lockdown. And all of that work stopped when the House was pro-rode, when Parliament was pro-rode. And that's a normal thing to do when the government wants to do a reset. In the past, we've had governments that have pro-rode to avoid a confidence vote. In the case of the Harper Government, they, they pro-rode Parliament to avoid confidence vote from the NDP and the Liberals. In this case, a speech from the throne actually means that we have a confidence vote. After that speech, we will have an opportunity to vote on whether we support what we hear about in the speech. And we don't know what's in that speech yet. And so I can't tell you for sure whether I'll be voting confidence in the government or not, but I can tell you that when I was elected, I, I said that I was going to make sure that we, we stood by the, the limits of, the scientists told us that we live in around our climate and that we have to, to meet our Paris Climate Targets. And that means that we need to increase our, our targets to reduce our carbon footprint in this country to meet those targets. And the, the government hasn't done that yet. We're still on the targets that were set by the Harper Government before the Paris Accord. So we'll see what happens around those issues. We also want to see serious action on reconciliation for Indigenous people in this country. That's been on the agenda for a long time, but we, we need to see that implemented. And we want to see action to help people, ordinary Canadians. And so we've been pushing for things like guaranteed livable income, a national action plan for seniors, and a national action plan implemented with the housing strategy, affordable housing. We do have a national housing strategy, but we're not seeing that unfold in the way that we'd like to see it. So there's a number of things that we're, we're looking at. And we have a document that we have put up on the website, Reimagining Our Future, which looks at coming out of, out of the pandemic and moving forward with, you know, climate in mind, this other emergency that we're in, and making sure that we take care of people on the planet. So a couple of things, I guess, you know, just one of the ways that I deal with working in parliament is a collaborative style. I, I send my questions to ministers in advance. It's kind of odd. It's like what the backbench government members would do, but I actually want a more fulsome answer. And rather than playing gotcha games and trying to catch the government off guard, I want, you know, serious full answers to my questions. And I follow up my questions in the House of Commons with a discussion with the minister or the parliamentary secretary who's answered me. And if that's not possible, I'll send them an email. I send them research and, you know, try to engage them and try to get them to see why I'm asking those questions and what it is that we need in this community in Nanaimo Lady Smith. And it's a very respectful way of working in the House of Commons. I don't shy away from asking tough questions, but I do it in a respectful manner. And, and it's actually paid off in terms of access to ministers and parliamentary secretaries during this, this lockdown. I do have some direct cell numbers with, with some of those people and I do hear back from them and they've, you know, appreciated the feedback that we've given. So we've been advocating all along for, you know, improve, improvements to help people get through the pandemic and through the crisis. Before the lockdown started, I was already flagging with the government, the need to make sure that people who aren't covered by employment insurance, people who work in the gig economy, people with precarious jobs, the, you know, self-employed people, students. I wanted to make sure that, that those folks were all covered in the case of a lockdown. And we've been advocating all along to ensure that people are covered property. When the wage subsidy first came out, the Canadian Emergency Wage Subsidy first came out at 10%, we immediately flagged that for the government and said, we should be looking at what the Europeans are doing, in particular Denmark, where they have a 75% to 80% wage subsidy. And eventually the government did pull around to doing that. We advocated for guaranteed livable income or a universal basic income that would cover everybody and be clawed back incrementally, rather than, you know, what we have with the SERV, the Canadian Emergency Response Benefit, where you, when, when you earn $1,000, more than $1,000, everything gets clawed back. That has been adjusted now, which is good. But we, we had advocated for programs that would help more, more people. One of the things that we really had to focus on right away was all of the stranded Canadians around the planet. So we had people who were stranded on, on cruise ships and people were dying on, on the cruise ships of COVID, on, on these ships that we were trying to get people off of. And they were, were being refused entry into all kinds of different ports. So we were advocating for them. We've had people in Peru, Guatemala, Costa Rica, Cameroon, Gabon, Philippines, Chile, Haiti, all over the planet, where we've been trying to get them back into Canada. In some cases, we had people in remote areas where they were in lockdown, where we had to get the medicine. In one case, Elizabeth May put us in touch with the former Canadian ambassador to the Philippines, who happens to be one of her constituents. And he reached out to his contacts in that country in order to help a specific family that was stranded there, to help them get medicine that they needed and to help them get out of the country. So my staff have been working really hard during this pandemic and, and dealing with these, all these different issues, answering the phones, answering emails, making sure that people's needs were met and helping people access the government. So we, you know, here in the office, we have direct numbers and direct emails for different bureaucrats and different departments, and we can advocate directly for you if you have a problem. And that's what my staff has been busy doing and they've just been doing a wonderful job with that. I can't thank them enough for the hard work that they've been doing. And we've also, you know, I'd like to thank the civil service for the work that they've done during this crisis. And a lot of these folks also dealing with the same situation that everybody else has been dealing with, working from home under strenuous circumstances, sometimes kids running around in lockdown situations, dealing with this crisis and trying to help as many Canadians as they can. And they've done an amazing job of doing that, including the folks from Global Affairs Canada, who have helped us get Canadians home. And there are still Canadians all over the world who are still stranded, who we've had to tell, you have to shelter in place, stay safe, you know, do what you can to stay, stay safe and stay healthy. But they're in a lockdown situation. There's no traveling out of the country, across borders, no, no flights, those kinds of things. And so there's people still in, in really difficult positions. We have been advocating, as I was saying, on a long, long list of things, including the, you know, getting successfully with other MPs, getting spouses and common law partners of Canadians to enter the country. We're still advocating for people who are in long-term relationships to be allowed into Canada. So far, that regulation hasn't changed, but a few individuals have been let in on a case by case basis. We get different requests for people who need to cross the border for various reasons, for medical reasons, and, and we work on those exemptions. We've been working on the issue of people using the Alaska loophole to come to Canada from the United States and, you know, boaters overland and actually coming here as tourists rather than heading straight to Alaska as they were supposed to do. And we have, we have a treaty with the United States on this that allows Americans have a right to be able to, to go through the country in order to get to Alaska. We've been advocating for countless individuals and small businesses to access government assistance programs. And the, the business programs, there was a lot of gaps in those programs to begin with. And we've, you know, heard from Chamber of Commerce, from all kinds of different small businesses in the community and brought those things up to the government. And I would actually compile lists, my staff would help me with compiling lists of all of the different examples and concrete examples, so you could tell, you know, a government minister about an individual, the situation that they were in, or a business and the situation they were in, and how none of the, none of the supports and programs were meeting their needs and they were in a crisis, a financial crisis. So we've been working on, on those issues, advocating for people with disabilities. And I'm sorry, those checks are coming eventually. They're, they're supposed to be in in October. It's really unfortunate that we've, you know, had this long delay on that. And one of the ways that Parliament has been working is that we have to have everything done through unanimous consent. That was when, you know, an agreement that we had when we adjourned Parliament. And every time that we sit in the House of Commons and pass legislation, we have to do it through unanimous consent. And that means that all of the MPs from all of the parties have to work together on these issues. And we have been, I mean, it was, it's, in the beginning, it was a real Team Canada effort. And with all of those, those calls, the technical briefings, different MPs would be bringing in the same issues and talking about the same things. And we were advocating for our constituents and for other Canadians and for businesses across the country that were dealing with the same issues. And we had to continue to do that. And one of the ones that didn't get unanimous consent was the, the payment for disabilities. And that's a real unfortunate thing. It means that there was a huge delay in that, but that, that check is coming. We worked on getting seniors help. We know that there are still industries that are having a real hard time, tourism, the entertainment industry, nonprofit sector. We've been advocating for sector-specific support for all of those sectors because they're going, it's going to be a long time before they recover. And people need help. People, people, you know, need, need help with their businesses to make sure that they don't go bankrupt, to make sure that they can pay their bills. We've worked on a lot of the First Nations businesses. They, a lot of the First Nations businesses are set up in a very unique manner. And we, you know, some of those businesses weren't eligible at first. And so we advocated on their behalf and myself and some, and some other MPs worked pretty hard on that. And those changes were made so that those businesses could be helped as well. We've been advocating along with other MPs for airline passengers to be given refunds for canceled flights. And the airline industry is asked for, for support and for help. And we told them that they need to take care of their passengers in order for us to advocate for them. They need to make sure that their passengers are taken care of. In some cases, passengers have been told, you, you can't get a refund. You can, we'll give you a ticket that's, you know, a good for six months. And in the meantime, we're still in, in a lockdown for travel, limited travel. You know, somebody who had tickets to go to Newfoundland, if they went to Newfoundland now, they would have to self-quarantine for 14 days. So you want to travel across the country and go to a province that still has quarantine rules like that for anybody from other provinces? I don't think so. So the airlines need to, to be able to help those passengers and, and to provide refunds or to have better programs available for, for those tickets. In the case, you know, the, in, in some cases, the tickets, the tickets were only available for another year. So people will cancel a flight and they have, have to use the, the voucher within a year. And in the case of the Chamber of Commerce here in Nanaimo, they bought tickets to go to two different conferences. And those are annual conferences and they want to use them for next year. Well, the date that they were canceled means that they have to use them one year before that date comes up again. And that's not going to help them get to next year's conference. So those kinds of things need to, need to be taken care of. We've also, I've been advocating very strongly on, on seniors' care homes. One of the first things when I was elected, I started to hear about Nanaimo Seniors Village. And it was, you know, owned by On Bang Insurance Retirement Concepts, had been bought by this Chinese insurance company. And then there was a corruption scandal with that company and it was, that company was taken over by the Chinese state. So then it became a Chinese state-owned corporation that owned Retirement Concepts in Nanaimo Seniors Village. And the, the conditions in the, in those seniors' homes was appalling. And so, you know, thankfully, the Vancouver Island Health Authority took over those, some of those particular seniors' homes in Nanaimo Seniors Village. And we didn't have COVID ravaging through there, but we've seen in seniors', long-term care facilities across this country, COVID just ravaging through. And this is where the highest number of deaths are from COVID-19. The next, you know, highest number of deaths are really in marginalized communities, people of color, people living in poverty and working for, in low-income jobs, essential service jobs, they've been called, like grocery store workers or other essential jobs, cleaning staff, things like that. And these, these are folks that have to take transit to get to work. They live in crowded conditions in many cases and, you know, substandard housing and, and built buildings that are crowded, where, you know, multi-generational families are living in, in apartments that, that really don't have enough room for them. And that's where COVID has spread a lot too. We've also been dealing with some of the international issues. In particular, I want to talk about Hong Kong because of the situation with people that are trying to bring democracy to Hong Kong and the new security law and the threats that that has, has brought to, to anybody who's advocating for democracy in Hong Kong. And we've been advocating that those people, those activists should be able to come to Canada on an expedited basis as asylum seekers. And we've seen, you know, 10 people who tried to get out of Hong Kong, who were activists, democracy activists, who were seized on their way to Taiwan. And, you know, China has a terrible human rights record. Let's be honest about this. The Uighurs are in a terrible situation with these concentration camps. The situation, you know, for anybody who's trying to change that society, to make a democratic society, you know, means that they're, they're, they're threatened. So another thing just hot off the presses, I know I've already been getting a lot of emails about this, but Transport Canada has announced that the exemption allowing passengers to stay in their vehicles on the ferry is going to end on September 30th. I don't think that's a good idea. Initially, those rules were put in place after the, the Queen of the North, I think was the name of the ferry that sunk up by Hartley Bay. And there was people, the people that died on that ferry were in their camper, they were in their RV. And so when the ship started to sink, you know, they, they weren't woken up and, and they died on that boat. And so Transport Canada has set rules. I don't know if there's been other deaths in other places, but they've set rules and it's for right across Canada, the ferries in Atlantic Canada, the same rules. You can't stay on the car deck. Well, people who have RVs that go on or truckers, you know, a trucker can go into his sleeping cabin in the back and no, no, you know, nobody from BC Ferries is going to know that they're back there or somebody on an RV. But if somebody sleeps in their car, a ferry worker can quickly see and knock on the window, you know, if there's an emergency. And people need to be, be able to stay safe on the ferries. And there are people with compromised immune systems who have been contacting me, who are worried about taking the ferries, they need to take the ferries. And so I'm going to be writing to the Transport Minister about this tomorrow, just to raise this, raise this issue. I've got some questions from email. I'm going to pass it on to Elan, so he can ask the questions while I have a quick drink of water. And then if you have questions and you want to add them to the chat, please do so. As you know, when I was seeking election, one of my promises was to have town halls twice a year in each part of the riding, so people could come out. I could give a report like this. People could ask me questions, ask me anything and I'd be there to answer. And so this is your opportunity to ask questions. Of course, with COVID, I'm not able to go and, and do this. We had a whole series of meetings that were, were scheduled in March and April, and I, I managed to do, I think, the first two. And then all of the rest of them were canceled because of the pandemic. So this is your opportunity to ask me questions, tell me what you want, what you want me to be advocating for, and I'm happy to answer. So I'll let, I'll let Elan take it from here.
All right. And thank you for giving that update of all of your work. And so we got a bunch of questions via email and I'll rattle some off for you. The first one was from Diane in Nanaimo. She writes, "My question concerns the National Housing Strategy Act of 2019, which recognizes the right to adequate housing as a fundamental human right affirmed in international law and also recognizes the right to affordable housing. The federal government was supposed to appoint the National Housing Council and the federal housing advocate to flesh out and implement policy to support the new law, but it has not done so. The former UN Special Rapporteur on the Right to Housing, Leleini Farha, has called several times for the government to make these appointments so work can properly proceed, but nothing has happened. Will you please commit to rattling cages until these appointments are made?"
Well, Diane, one of the first meetings I had in Ottawa, when I was elected last May, before I had an office, I had to, to book a committee room. And before I had my own computer, I just had a laptop I tripped around with. My first, one of my first meetings was with the Special Rapporteur, Leleini Farha. And I met with her and then I advocated for the government to, to appoint a, a National Housing Council and a federal housing advocate after that initial meeting. And I'm, I'm going to follow up on those requests. Affordable housing was the first thing I asked about in the House of Commons, my first question in question period. And I've been active on that file ever since. So I've been advocating for a number of local projects because I, one of the things that I did was to call around to all the different housing agencies and ask them if they had projects that were stuck in, in any kind of process. I had heard from one housing organization. And so then I just checked, checked in with the rest of them. And after my first question in the House of Commons, the Parliamentary Secretary, Adam Bond, approached me and he told me if there's any, any issues that, that I needed to bring up with him, that to go ahead. And so I did have a little debate with them afterwards, because if you're not satisfied with your question, I mean, you get a 35 second question and a 35 second answer. If you're not satisfied with the answer, you can put in a request for a late show debate and that gives me 10 minutes to, to question, to talk about the issue and then 10 minutes for a response. So I was able to talk about all the, the different housing issues that we, we face here in, not just Nanaimo Lady Smith, but right across BC. And this, this latest report that Jenny Kwan has put together based on the research of, about how much money has been spent in, in British Columbia for the National Housing Strategy is really disappointing. And I have emailed both the minister and the parliamentary secretary about that to let them know that I'm disappointed. I've brought a number of projects to the parliamentary secretary that... I've brought a number of projects to the parliamentary secretary that uh either we're facing different issue, different issues. Like in one case, the uh there was a differential between this, the amount per square foot that the province would pay. And the amount per square foot that uh the federal government would play pay through CMHA. And uh and it was based on on um the environmental rules and making sure that these uh building, these buildings are energy efficient. And that's a good thing because we want any um low income housing, purpose built housing. To be energy efficient, to keep the cost down over time. And so that's an issue I brought forward with him. I've uh found uh organizations that weren't aware of different parcels of money. Uh that they could apply for. And I've brought different housing projects to the parliamentary secretary to his attention. It's an issue I I will keep working on because uh we have a crisis here and this is. You know, this is a worldwide problem. We have hedge funds and pension funds that are buying up housing stock and. Using that as uh you know, real estate uh income, rental income. And it's it's, you know, we have a lot of pensioners uh who are moving here to retire, but we have this other problem around the world. And what we need is purpose built housing that is nonprofit housing and co op housing. That's one of the things that I really. Uh push for. I'm a big believer in the co op movement. Uh and co op housing is a great model for housing because the community owns it. And people can can live in a co op project uh through all stages of their lives. So uh your your rent is based on on um your income. So if you lose your job, you don't lose your home, you just end up paying a different price. If you're, you want to age in place and stay in the same community. As a senior, you can move into a smaller unit and still be living with the families and the young, young children that you've. That you've seen grow from babies to school age kids to teenagers. And so it's a great model of housing and and it's owned by the community. And the federal government hopped out of the co op. Funding uh process a long time ago, decades ago. And there the co op stock in other places needs to be fixed. And in this community, we never had any co op projects. When they were building them in Victorian Vancouver, Nanaimo didn't get any. And that was prob at the at the time because we didn't have uh um. A problem with housing stock. There was lots of cheap housing available at that time, but that is not the case now. And we need to to deal with that situation. So nonprofit housing uh. Owned and operated and and co ops are the way to go. And I'm going to continue to push on this and rattle some cages, yes.
All right, thank you, Paul. Uh the next question was sent in by email as well from Bill M. from Nanaimo. He writes, in the city of Nanaimo, along with many other municipalities across our nation. We face issues with homelessness and the spin off negative effects onto the residents that live in those places. Here in Nanaimo, we have a large group that camp throughout the city with a large encampment right by our city government offices. In my opinion, we need detox, rehab and housing. Followed by reeducation to help the homeless become once again citizens who can who contribute to their community. We also have a large number with mental health issues, which are best served by housing units of six or less. These are healthish, these are health issues. And as you are aware, the province and federal governments have health under their guardianships. What will be done by Ottawa? What can you as a federal representative do to help the people of your riding on the federal level?
So I've hardly answered this already, Bill, and I'll, I'm going to keep on pushing. I mean, housing is a provincial responsibility. And so the funds generally flow from the federal government to the provincial government. And um CMHA, uh Canadian Mortgage and Housing uh Association has. CMHC, sorry. Puts money into these into these projects. There are different uh pockets of money available for uh indigenous housing, for example. There is money that comes into the community and I've been advocating for um more reaching home money. And we did get uh an extra four hundred thousand dollars in this community to help with um the homeless population here. Uh and I I was advocating for more money and that came as part of the pandemic plan. Um our our office here is right by City Hall. And so, you know, we're. A block away from Wesley Street where there there is an encampment of people who are mostly drug users. And and in um a terrible situation, really. And I see people, you know, going by my window every day. I sometimes see people sitting out in front of my office uh using drugs. And these people are the 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 family, friends of other community members. And uh we need to be compassionate and and try to provide the services that they need. And what we need is wraparound services. And I'm happy to see that the provincial government is looking at these new models of um. Shelters with more wraparound services and a way to to facilitate people getting the things that they need. With in terms of, you know, the mental health crisis. We had institutions close uh, you know, across the province, across the country, based on the Charter of Rights and Freedom. And we didn't have a proper plan in place for where those people could go. And so we're seeing people on the street with. Serious mental health issues, schizophrenia, um. Uh you know, different issues that are that are really torturing them. And this strikes really close to home for me. I had a cousin who who had schizophrenia, who um. Wasn't allowed to go back after after an incident with police, wasn't allowed to go back to the farm that he lived on and ended up in the city. Of Vernon where, you know, the vultures and the predators got on to him, had him addicted to drugs. And he died of an overdose, of an opioid overdose, after being released from prison for, I don't know, the nineteenth time. For, you know, petty survival type crimes. And so we need to, we need to have wraparound services. We need, you're right, we need detox, we need rehab. Uh and we need housing. And we need to to deal with addiction in a different way. It's a health issue, it's a social issue, it's not a criminal issue. Right now. Drugs are actually regulated, uh street drugs are regulated by organized crime. They're the ones that are bringing them into the country. They're the ones that are selling and property from, and they're the ones that are determining who gets, who gets the drugs. And what we need to do is have the government take back that uh that responsibility. And that means uh decriminalization. It's not a popular thing that a lot of people want to hear, but you know, are the health uh experts are saying this now, Bonnie Henry, Theresa Tam. The premier of this province has called for decriminalization of possession of drugs. And we need a safe supply. And that means giving people um a safe supply of clean. Uh narcotics and then giving them the support that they need. So when they come in to get that supply that they're getting. Uh they're interacting with social workers, they're working with people that that can help them in their situation, getting them into housing. Getting them into jobs. I mean, people, people who have addiction issues can function fully in society. We've seen it from lots of different. Uh types of types of people in different professions. A lot of the creative professions, actually, like musicians who who lived with addiction and and functioned that way. Uh unfortunately, the drugs these days aren't the drugs that uh those people were doing back, back in the day, in the fifties and the sixties. It's they're 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 doing drugs that are poisonous and uh that will kill them. And uh and we're seeing actually more deaths, not from the people on the street, but people who are using at home alone. And these are people you wouldn't suspect of being drug users. They're teachers, they are construction workers, they're people. Um that that have families. Who are using alone because of the stigma related to to addiction and to criminalization of drugs. So it's, there is no silver bullet. There's no silver bullet to this. It's just like any, any other complex problem. It's silver buckshot. And it requires a whole series of different actions and different ways of dealing with things and not. One solution is not going to help everybody. So you have people with serious mental health issues who have addiction issues. Those people have complex problems that need to be uh worked on and they they're going to need serious help. Um other people are going to be, you know, in a an easier situation. And we have people in our, in our community who are vulnerable, who have become homeless for no, you know, no fault of their own. Um and it's because house prices have spiked and houses are flipping. When I used to run programs, employment programs, uh and this is one thing I've I've told the government a number of times. I did. Programs for Service Canada, getting people with diverse abilities, disabilities into the workforce. And I had less of a problem finding um jobs for those people. And I did finding homes for the ones that became homeless during the program. And in a, in a fifteen week program. Out of the sixty people I had go through my program, ten percent of them, six of them became homeless while they were in that fifteen week program. And others, you know, before or after had been homeless as well. And and these are people, you know, if they have diverse abilities. Disabilities, they should not be on our streets. And we have seniors living in their cars. We have um. You know, single parent families who are living in camp sites or uh in cars and if you, you know, vehicles. Um who are homeless and and um they're really vulnerable and we need to make sure that we take care of them. So there's all kinds of different situations that people are in, that people find themselves in. And so we, you know, we don't have a one size fits all plan, but we need to work multiple levels of government. You know, federal, provincial and municipal all together to to fix these problems.
All right, Paul. Well, thanks for that answer. And we have a bu- a bunch of questions still that came in through email. And we have a quite a few questions that have come in from the chat. And uh I don't want to, I don't want us to run out of time, so we're going to do a little bit of a of a um rapid fire questions. Kind of if you can try to limit your answers to two minutes or so, that'd be great. I know that there's, there's a lot, these issues are very complex and it's difficult. But I'll go right into the next question. He um asked, in an age where many agree that corporations have too much influence on our political process. I was wondering if you were open to policies that would begin the process of correcting this imbalance. For example, bailing out companies with public money on conditions that they reorganize into more democratic institutions. Or in the event that they go bankrupt, giving the workers of that company the first opportunity to buy it out. As the UK Labour Party proposed on their last platform. Would you be willing to support pursuing policies to encourage the creation of more worker cooperatives and other forms of democratically organized enterprises?
Yes, how's that for a rapid answer? Um I am a big supporter of the co op model and and uh workers should get first priority to, you know, for opportunities to take over bankrupt companies. HARMAC Pacific and Czech are great examples. They're great models of uh employees taking over and buying into the company. So that they could keep those companies going. You know, and when companies go bankrupt, all too often, it's the workers that are left holding the bag. And they lose their pensions because the pensions are farther down the line than than uh, you know, the the funders and the shareholders. And I think that that needs to be flipped. And so um the the employees should have the opportunity to take over companies. And you get a company like Sears that went went under, people have been working for that company for thirty years and lost their pension. And they should have been able to to um. Take it over. And and in the case like that, it was, it was really uh, you know, a a new CEO comes in. Takes over, guts the country out, the company out. Pays out all the shareholders, gives all the executives uh big bonuses and then bankrupts the company. And that should not be allowed. They should all have been held accountable for that. And and that accountability should have been to the workers to ensure that those workers got their pensions. And kept their jobs.
All right, thank you. Next question came from Hassan S. from Ladysmith. My question for the town hall pertains to the economic fallout of the COVID nineteen on the Canadian economy in general. And our small and our small community in particular. Close observation of our small local businesses reveals financial anxiety amongst the owners. To be able to stay open should the pandemic stretch for the foreseeable future. The local job market also seems to be disturbed, although the reasons may be far wider than just COVID nineteen. For example, job readiness skills, et cetera. Is there any plan to constitute some structured or loose study group focused on our community? That can take a closer look at the small business challenges, job market, et cetera. And come up with a set of practical recommendations to tackle the impending crisis. To my mind, while the Chamber of Commerce is a good start, wider community participation may also help, especially with, may also help, yeah.
So, yeah, I think that, you know, working with the Chamber of Commerce and the Canadian Federation of Independent Business. Is a good way to start. There are chapters of the C F I B locally and they're in a position to take a lead. On on these kind of initiatives. The federal government has um training programs. Like I said, I worked on some with with Service Canada. And we need to have us uh set up for people to be able to get retrained. We're going to actually see um more of a crisis. With this, with automation and artificial intelligence taking people's jobs. And that's why, one of the reasons why I advocate for guaranteed livable income. So that people have a a basic income that that they can use while they retrain, they go to school. They take chance with uh entrepreneur um activity um and be able to um. You know, move, move from one field to another. And supporting small businesses is crucial, like we. We need to support small business in this country. They employ more Canadians than than anybody else. You think about the big companies, it's really not the big companies that are employing the the uh, the bulk of Canadians. It's some seventy five percent of Canadians. Are employed by small businesses. So people need to support small businesses in our community. Avoid the big box stores and and make sure that you uh take care of the of the small, the small business owners in your community. Uh by by patronizing their businesses. Um and that's, you know, how we're going to keep, keep business alive. I think uh we we have to be looking at other models because obviously there's challenges with uh COVID in the pandemic. With with uh people doing a lot more shopping online and things like that. And uh. Yeah, you see a company like Amazon is that's going gangbusters during the pan pandemic while all the local shops are suffering. And um we need a different model. The federal government needs to to work on regulating those, those big companies. Like Amazon and Google and uh making sure that they pay their fair tax, their fair share of taxes in this country. So there's a lot of different things that that uh need to be done, but I I support the idea of of. Bringing people together on a local level to see how we can tackle this.
Okay, thanks, Paul. And um we're going to continue with the rapid fire because time's running out and lots of questions left.
Need to make these questions shorter then, come on.
Bruce G. from Nanaimo Road is worried about uh possible elections. The biggest issue for me is that we can't allow the conservatives a chance to win a majority. I see that a lot of people think that Justin Trudeau isn't fit for Pete, for to be prime minister based on multiple indiscretions. What are you proposing to do to save the country from the potential ravage of another conservative government? Canada cannot afford that to happen. Alberta is a disaster, says Bruce.
So, yeah, I try to keep these things non partisan and I'm here mostly to talk about the issues. And my my priority is to make sure that people are taken care of. Uh and not big corporations. And we've seen successive governments from different parties that uh have served the corporate interest. We've seen austerity and 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 cuts to healthcare and cuts to programs under the Liberals. And we've seen that under under the Conservatives. Now is not the time for austerity. Now is not the time to make cuts. You don't cut back during a recession. Uh that's what drives. You know, the economy into into a depression. You need to make sure that uh that uh consumers, that. You know, workers, ordinary people have some money to spend in the economy and that's how you keep it it uh generating and afloat. While we work through a pandemic and while we work through a crisis. So I'm, you know, I promote good i- good ideas, good po- public policy and encourage governments to take care of the needs of ordinary people. Take care of the environment uh on which we need to survive. And we depend on on a, on a clean environment for our survival. And to have a healthy life and to ensure that our children and grandchildren have a livable, livable future. So. I would say, you know, educate your friends and your family about these kind of issues and and just keep on on pushing. We need to to push to make sure the government serves the interests of ordinary Canadians rather than the interests of the big, big uh corporations.
All right, thank you, Paul. Uh Ron B. from Nanaimo asks. The giants of the communication industry are fighting to increase their production and share of the radio frequencies bouncing around our planet. As the evidence of its dangers to physical and mental health also mounts geometrically. And Canada's Safety Code Six effectively leaves citizens to their own devices in this confusing milieu. What do you believe is the obligation of our governments at all levels to protect? What do you believe is the obligation of our governments at all levels to protect citizens from the same kind of health misadventures that have occurred in the past in cases such as tobacco, asbestos, lead and gasoline and paint, thalidomide, flame retardants, phthalates, et cetera?
Well, the government has a, has a responsibility to regulate and should be using a precautionary principle in in terms of uh making sure that products that we use are safe and technology that we use is safe. Um, from what I know, Safety Code Six is uh updated on a regular basis. They can, you know, to continue um to ensure that there that there is protection there. I um have sponsored a petition that you can look up. It's E twenty-seven twenty-nine and not, that uh is about uh environmental sensitivities, uh people with uh different disabilities around environmental illness, multiple, multiple chemical sensitivity, electromagnetic uh hypersensitivity, toxic mold exposure, um and others. Approximately three percent of uh Canadians have been diagnosed with uh electro uh or environmental sens- sensitivities. And I know just from myself that that um I have sensitivities to things like I can't handle the smell of water perfume. It gives me headaches. I can't handle the smell of paint. I'm chemically sensitive. And so I understand that there are people that that have these kind of sensitivities. And that includes uh people who have electromagnetic sensitivity. So that's, this petition is calling on the government to create an international classification of disease designation code in Canada for environmental sensitivities so that those affected may have access to medical care. Uh, include environmental sensitivities as a disability that must be accommodated in all relevant documents and forms uh in government departments and organizations that minister social assistance, housing, medical and other public services. And ensure all indoor public spaces are declared uh scent and fragrance free. I mean, that's this has got five hundred and twelve signatures now. You can look, look it up. It's E twenty-seven twenty-nine. And you can share that around. And the the government does have a responsibility to make sure that people are taken care of.
All right, there's another somewhat related question. And again, we have to keep it short because we're running out of time and so lots of questions. So uh Inga B. From Nanaimo asked, as you know, world renowned scientists, among them, Dr. Martin Paul gave talks in Nanaimo and other B C cities about the serious health situation caused by electromagnetic radiation, E M R. Which will become even more catastrophic as five G is rolled rolled out everywhere. The five G wireless technology also seriously impacts the already severe climate crisis. If the five G rollout proceeds as planned, experts predict that energy consumption will increase dramatically. And waste problems will become insurmountable. As a responsible leader, what will you do to inform your constituents and the public in general about the serious impacts of five G?
Well, so for people that don't know about five G, five G stands for fifth generation. And that's, you know, the the next generation of cell cellular technology. Uh, we have been using radio waves for, you know, since the advent of radio. And, you know, long wave radio is something with a very long frequency that can go great distances and and go around large obstacles. The shorter the signal, uh the the more they need to pop out that signal. So um five G is is based on very, very uh short uh frequency signals. And that means that they need to have antennas all over the place for this. So I've been given all kinds of different documentation on this and I've shared some of the documentation that I found credible. So I've sent uh the Lancet article that was sent to me to uh the minister. I brought it up. I was in a meeting with the um American ambassador and uh American representatives. And there was uh an all party uh meeting and we were talking about five G and the rollout for five G because there's serious implications for national security around Huawei and the technology. And um, you know, China having a back door uh on on this technology. And I brought up these, the health concerns there. And uh you know, part of the problem with talking about this issue is there's talk about five G in all kinds of different uh conspiracy uh type, type of um forums where five G is blamed for COVID, the spread of COVID, or five G is blamed for forest fires or or other things. And I think that is incumbent on people that uh want to educate the government about this or raise these concerns that they stick with uh with credible information. And you know, our, our policy, my policy is that uh we need to look at the precautionary principle in terms of uh making sure that that things are safe. We are seeing a huge rollout. The um the technology companies have spent trillions of dollars on this and um it's like a juggernaut. So um you know, I I've uh I've talked about this in different uh circumstances and um raised aware awareness about it in different circumstances. There's a lot of misinformation about five G. There is some credible information about five G. I think anytime you're talking about uh health research, scientific research, you know, there's, there will be different studies that tell you different things. I've, you know, heard that the Lancet has uh said that coffee has been good and bad. Wine's good, bad, chocolate, good, bad, you know, for you for different reasons. And coffee isn't good for everybody. You know, it's not something that 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 uh is is good if you have too much of it. And it's just not right for some people at all. And that's the same with uh with wine and alcohol. So they say that it's good for a little bit of um you know, blood thinning or whatever, a little bit of red wine. Too much, not good for you. Uh, but definitely not good for everybody. So with this kind of technology, I understand is that there there are people who who are electromagnetic uh sensitive. And they should have a right to um live a life that's free of uh of any additional radiation that they, that they, that that might affect them. So it's a complex issue. And I've tried to learn what I can about it and tried to share that information with um with ministers and with other members of parliament.
Okay, thanks, Paul. So uh we're kind of running, really running out of time. Uh, these were the questions that came by email. Now we're gonna go on really rapid fire questions from the chat. Kazanova F. asked, how about a move where you can, how about a move where you can afford to buy incentive? I'm assuming that Kazanova was talking about an incentive for people to move from unaffordable places like Vancouver to smaller community, uh communities elsewhere in Canada that are affordable to live.
Um, I think that's not a bad idea. I think you need to have jobs in place for people to go to. There are incentives for for people in the medical profession to do that. And um yeah, I've, I think the part of the issue is that places where it's affordable to live, there's not enough work in in a lot of cases. So that's uh, that's part of the issue. And I, and I think um you can incentivize people to move, but uh, we've seen incentives from other provinces for people to come to B C, basically buying people uh who are homeless uh bus tickets to British Columbia, you know, back when the Olympics were on. And and that's not a fair way of dealing with things. So if there was a program that uh could match people up, and I think that they they do that, they have some incentives for immigrants as well to move into areas where there's less population and it's cheaper to live and where they need workers.
All right, and Minor Lee asks, when are M P. Is going to deal with all the horrendous traffic everywhere? This is a health problem. I guess we can talk about a national public transportation strategy and investment in public transportation?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I agree. We need to have uh better public transit and we need interurban transit as well. I mean, that's one of the things we're seeing a real crisis in. The um, the train system across Canada uh has been just uh, you know, left to wallow uh when the tracks were were sold um for C N uh via rail gets a second ride on those tracks and uh traveled across the country on train and 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 uh been ten, twelve, fourteen, twenty hours behind uh reaching some cities because you spend a lot of time sitting on a side track waiting for freight trains to go by and mostly, you know, oil cars and and other things. And um you know, the the traffic in in cities of, you know, the roads in municipalities or municipal uh jurisdiction, highways or provincial jurisdiction except for Highway One. But the federal government does have a role to play in green infrastructure and uh putting money into into um programs like uh transit. So there's a role for the government to play and and that's what we should be doing. And we advocate for that for sure.
All right, Diane V., who asked the question earlier about housing in the email in the chat, wrote um targets for emission reductions to meet the Paris Agreement, question mark? What about an actual plan to meet the targets?
Yeah. That's what we've been asking for. So what, yeah, what we want to see is an actual plan and and the stages of how those targets are going to be met. And what we haven't seen that yet. And that's one, one thing that we stipulated before uh the last speech from the throne, we said that that this is what we expected in our, in our um pre-budget uh consultation documentations that we sent. And we've, we've done this as well. We've given the government lots of ideas about how that, how they can do that. And we've seen um economists like Joe Joseph Stiglitz and Nicholas Sterns come up with plans after, after doing interviews with uh, you know, finance ministers and um uh Department of Finance, uh people, central bankers from the G twenty uh to ask them like what would be the best bang for the budget uh in best bang for the buck in terms of uh stimulus spending. And you know, the top of that is putting money into renewable energy. Uh, projects, wind, solar, tidal, geothermal. And uh that creates a lot of jobs, good paying jobs. That creates infrastructure that then doesn't need a ton of maintenance. And and uh the people that are have been laid off in other industries could go back to those industries as they ramp up. And the other big one that they said with that creates, you know, good value for the money, money, the most jobs for dollars spent uh best long term investment is to retrofit buildings. So, you know, all of these institutions, the hospitals, the schools um provide incentives for businesses to do the same, provide incentives for landlords to do the same for their tenants uh and and for homeowners. We've seen homeowner grants in the past. Those have worked well um in terms of uh reducing energy, but we haven't seen that for landlords. And so those are, there's a bunch of things that were identified in a report. It was put out by uh Joseph Stiglitz and Nicholas Sterns. And if you're interested, just search that. It was put out by um Oxford and it's got great information. It's got a little chart that shows you, you know, best value for money spent uh also helps with the climate crisis. And worse, worse value for money spent and and doesn't help with climate crisis. So it's all on a on on a chart that shows you, and it lists a whole bunch of different things. And and it's really well researched.
All right, we're running a couple of minutes late, but we're gonna breeze through three more questions. Um Patricia asks, Paul, do you support a fine being levied on those who are abusing the travel allowance through to Alaska?
Um, I think that there, that there was, there is something already that uh the R C M P. Were charging people with not following through with the COVID plan. I mean, so there is a quarantine act and people who weren't traveling through um you know, straight through British Columbia to to get to Alaska or Alaska to Washington were actually charged under the Quarantine Act. And I think it included fines.
Yeah, I believe it did.
Yeah. So, yeah, I support that. I think, you know, you can't just have have these kind of rules without having any teeth. It's like, yeah, you broke the rule, sorry. That's, that's okay. Please don't do it again.
Yeah, for sure. Uh, Richard H. uh says, people with disabilities are being left behind in this age of online work, communication and community. Can the federal government assist people with disabilities to access accessible technologies? It's a big question and we, and you have to answer short.
Well, absolutely. I mean, there's things that the government uh can and should do. And I think that that's uh a very reasonable thing to be asking for is to, is to help with, more help with assistive tech- technology and and training and a way for for um people with disabilities, diverse abilities to engage in the economy in a fulsome way and to engage in communities in a fulsome way. And um, I've, you know, I I have to tell you, Richard, I'm disappointed in what the government has has done for people with disabilities during this crisis because I know that uh there's been a lot of added cost to everybody. And when you're living on a fixed income and on on a disability pension, that that extra amount of money, whether it's fifty or a hundred dollars a month, that's a lot of money. Uh, to to uh low income senior person with a disability, single parent family. And um, so, yeah, I've been uh I haven't been pleased that we haven't got that money out to people with disabilities during this pandemic. And I, and absolutely, there's more that we could be doing to help help people uh with disabilities engage in the economy and with communities through accessible technology.
All right. And the last um questions came from Geraldine M. from Elder Geraldine. And she's can, uh, she, my concern is with the travel on B C ferries elders who are stressed out about this. Elders on the ferry need a reserved space on the upper decks. This is more, both of her questions are kind of a little bit uh more provincial issues. She was uh, um, there was our admin, our moderators on the chat let Geraldine know that Paul, that you're gonna be writing to the minister. Um, and also um that uh we pass along the suggestion regarding dedicated space on the upper decks for elders.
Yeah, I think that that makes a lot of sense. You, you know, you you see that on on buses, on transit, those first few seats when you get on in front of a bus are set aside for people um for elders, for pregnant mothers, for people with disabilities. And and B C ferries should have the same kind of courtesy seats available to to um the same people, you know, the elders, people with disability, and they should be right by the elevator. And and I think um I'm not sure if you, if there's priority boarding you get with with uh disability or not, so that you can get near the elevators. I'm not sure. But um then it is provincial jurisdiction, B C ferries. Um, and but those are good ideas. I think, you know, making sure that we take care of people is important. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and the last comment that also Geraldine made, it's also kind of a provincial issue. And schoolchildren are finding a concern. Can school districts have iPads for those who can't go do online learning? So this is, this is um a kind of provincial issue again, a school district's issue.
Yeah, I mean, I think uh that's, some, some schools have been doing that. And um I'd love to see a program like that to make uh the technology more accessible to kids, especially the kids that can't go to school if their parents are they're living with their grandparents or people with compromised immune systems. It's they're, they're in a difficult situation and they, they need that technology. I will tell you that uh Literacy Central Vancouver Island does have computers for learners. Um, and they, after the, after the pandemic lockdown, they kept their shop open and were churning computers out. A lot of computers out to um people in need. And if you have a computer, if you have a laptop, you have an extra iPad uh that, you know, that uh you're able to donate, you can donate it to Literacy Central Vancouver Island. And they'll make sure that it gets in the hands of a learner, uh whether that's a, a child or an adult that's that's um improving their literacy skills. So that's, you know, one option and a great uh program for a nonprofit in our community.
All right. Well, uh, thank you so much, Paul. Thank you for all the people who uh watched. And uh, thank you for the people who sent questions in uh by email and for the people who asked questions in the chat.
Are you gonna tell them about next week, next Wednesday and Thursday?
Yeah, I wanna remind people that then next week, next Wednesday, September sixteenth from seventy-eight P M. Uh, Paul is gonna be hosting a workshop uh on online petitions, an online petition workshop. Petitions are a great way for um you as a citizen of Canada, petition the government um about an issue that's important to you. And uh if an online petition gets, once an online petition gets five hundred votes, Paul can table that petition in parliament and the government must respond to it. So the difference between the um the official House of Commons petitions and petition, kind of like a change.org petition is that um uh the government must respond to uh to an official House of Commons petition as long as a a electronic one gets at least five hundred votes. And you can go to uh rcommons um, what is it? petitions.rcommons.ca petitions.rcommons.ca. And if you search, uh, if you put the Manly in the search uh bar there, you'll see the petitions that uh Paul has up right now that Paul has sponsored. But uh next week, uh Wednesday, September sixteenth from seven to eight P M, Paul is gonna be hosting a petition workshop. That, you have to, for that workshop, you must register. So you can find out more information by going to PaulManleyMP.ca, PaulManleyMP.ca. And I'd also like to invite people to sign up for email updates uh at the website uh as well. These are parliamentary petitions, uh of course, that I'm discussing. And I'd also like to um invite people to sign up for email updates at Paul's website, PaulManleyMP.ca. So you'll um stay in the loop for any um upcoming events.
And next Thursday?
Next Thursday?
I'm doing a national town hall. And this is with experts from uh Basic Income Canada Network. And we're gonna be talking about guaranteed livable basic income, why we need it in Canada.
Yeah, so um.
That's all, that's, could all be on the website soon too.
Yeah. So, uh, yeah, if I didn't, uh, if I wasn't clear, the parliamentary petitions, the uh e-petitions, so the ones that are online as opposed to paper petitions. And right now, they're pretty much all online because of COVID. Parliamentary petitions need a minimum of five hundred signatures in order to be tabled. So um, yeah, more information at PaulManleyMP.ca. Thank you so much for joining us. And thank you, Paul.
Alright, thank you very much for for joining us. And um, you know, we're here. Uh, if you need us, if you have any issues with the federal government, feel free to call the office. My staff is here to help you. Send me an email if you have questions or issues. We're more than happy to answer your questions and and help you with your issues. And have a great night.
The phone number at the office is two five zero seven three four six four zero zero. You can also send emails to paul dot manly at paul dot G C dot C A. All this information is on Paul's website. And also, thank you to Lori, Alicia and Derek who helped out moderating the chat on YouTube. Have a good night.